Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for November 4th, 2019. Can I have a motion to go into executive session for the matters pertaining to the employment history of particular individuals and contractual negotiations?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Can I have a motion to go back into public session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good evening. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for November 4th, 2019. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Jovan and Hannah and then remain standing for a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones, especially the father of Gary Kitteridge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the red flag for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have public comment. Does anybody wish to speak on agenda-related items? No. So we're going to go right into the superintendent's showcase and good news?
All right. I am going to make my way to the podium so that I may address the board and our audience. Excuse me. This evening, we are so pleased to recognize two wonderful groups. We have a wonderful group of students and later in the evening, we have a wonderful, wonderful group of staff in our operations and maintenance department who we'll be honoring. We have members of our Yorktown Pioneer League team joining us, as well as their coaches and peer coaches and families. I'm pleased that we can honor such an outstanding group of students in this public forum. Our students and coaches devote so much time to ensuring participation in the Special Olympics. I take great joy in attending our home games of the Pioneer League team and even greater joy in witnessing our whole child philosophy realized through this opportunity. Our 2020 vision is what guides the work in the Yorktown Central School District and that's grounded in our work in East Team. East Team is built on the notion of educating the whole child. And throughout our work in the Pioneer League, there are so many different aspects of the whole child that are being educated here. There are so many different aspects that are being nurtured. This evening, we'll talk about a few of those different aspects, specifically character development, social-emotional development, and athletics, because they are an athletic team and they're a wonderful athletic team. At this time, I'd like to call up our Director of Pupil Personnel Services, Mr. Mike Rosen, to present you with a little more information about our Pioneer League team.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to recognize such a wonderful group of athletes, coaches, and peer coaches. There are a lot of things I look forward to every day when I come to work, each year, going to graduations, moving up, but game day. Game day on Wednesdays is something I look forward to every year once the season gets started. The team has been going for about eight or nine school years and it's just evolved over This is a picture of the team a couple of years ago. The team plays in a 14-team Pioneer Sports School League, the PSSL. This is last year's team. The season starts in late October. We start practicing for the first sport, which is soccer, and goes on into floor hockey. And you'll see some pictures next. We start, soccer goes in November and December, and then there's a break going through the holidays and we start floor hockey going through January and February. There's always a break. The team will go through a couple of practices, start soccer season, then there'll be a break for the holidays, and you'll see in our schedule, there's a couple of weeks where the team will practice before floor hockey season starts. The season will end, and then in March and April and into May, we go on to our basketball season, which is probably the longest of all the seasons that we have. This year, there are six basketball games that are going on, starting, as I said, starting in March and going through early May. This is a picture of the culminating game. This is our senior game. This gives us an opportunity to honor graduating student athletes. Last year, we had one student who graduated and we also celebrated with Lakeland. We were at Lakeland's home senior game. They honored our senior player, and we did the same when they came to our gym. You can see that the crowd, it was an amazing atmosphere of the game. I ran into students who were in the high school and I heard them all talking and I was asking what they were doing in the building, and they were just waiting for the game. They weren't there to do any extra help, go for tutoring. They could not miss the senior game. If you were in the gym, the fans were on every shot that was taken. Once it was up, you could hear the gasp in the air. If it went in, a cheer. If it missed, it was a great try and you heard the roar of the crowd. I bring this back again, just as we talk about, you know, character development, athletics, and the social-emotional piece. As I stated earlier, all you have to do is walk in the gym and you can feel it in there. The, I'm sorry. The pieces that we see as far as the teamwork, the sharing of the skills, the sportsmanship, you will see the players sharing with each other, cheering on everyone's baskets, helping each other out. You will see at a basketball game or a game where they will give the player who maybe missed a basket, a second shot, a third shot, a fourth shot. By this point, I'm like, okay, it's time to move on, but you will see them give a fifth and a sixth shot so that everybody has an opportunity to have an opportunity to score a goal or to make a basket. One of the things that our coaches, Mrs. Cahill and Ms. Hagerty have added in over the years, you'll see that we have the introductions of the players. Mrs. Cahill thoroughly enjoys her rendition of announcing all of the players, giving them nicknames, and certainly identifying whether they have done a great job on offense or defense. We've had cheerleaders come to participate in some of the games. We've had the, you know, some of our games, we've had the dance comedy come and perform at some of the games. And one of the greatest things that you'll see by the number of peer coaches that are here tonight, just a whole component of the program where we are going to support the students, and you see up there, helping out on the field with drills, assisting with putting equipment away, scrimmaging against the team, just providing praise and cheer, working the scoreboard and singing the National Anthem. I saw one of the students in the nurse's office earlier and I said, "Are you going to be joining the team and helping out again this year?" And without a hesitation, it was basically yes, and when do we get started? So they all are here and they look forward to their work with the students every Wednesday. The team practices every Wednesday and the games are Wednesday. As I said before, you can walk into the gym, the teamwork, you can see the sportsmanship, kindness, empathy are part of every game and every practice. You see the smiles on their face when the confidence is building, when baskets are made, when they play great defense, when they stop a goal. The resilience of trying again is all every day and every game that we see going on. We're all going to give all of you a copy of the schedule. The one that you see on the board includes the practices, so you have an idea of, you know, before soccer, we had, we have a couple of practices going on. Then the season will go on with a home game against Lakeland, goes on to floor hockey and basketball. It's just like in every schedule that you'll see for athletics. Some years, we have more home games than others. This year, it's not as many home games as we would like, but hopefully you'll be able to come and join us for the ones that are on the schedule, especially whether it's the senior game or any game during the season. One of the things that we're really excited about is going to be the culminating event of the Pioneer season, and that is a dinner dance. It's most likely going to be May 27th, that's the date we're looking at. It's basically like hosting a wedding, so we're looking at about 250-plus athletes, coaches, and peer coaches and volunteers who will be coming. Each year, a school hosts it. This year, we jumped at the opportunity to be the host and we're honored to do so. We've been looking at the venues. We've considered a couple, and I think we've now settled on utilizing Yorktown High School to utilize an area where the students can have a quiet area in the cafeteria and also then have food served, and then if they want to go dancing, they can go down into the gym and dance, because there's a lot of students who, you know, the music is not what they're looking for, so they'll have a quiet area to stay in the cafeteria. And I'm just going to leave you with this quick video. This is from a couple of years ago. Hopefully there's sound. Carolyn Almeida made this at the end of one of the seasons. So let it play through. So basically, it's to the song "We Will Rock You" by Queen, and as you can see, the cheerleaders are there welcoming the players, and I'm sure Ms. Cahill is announcing in some emphatic fashion of all the nicknames and the strengths and things for each player. Just congratulations to the team and have a great season. Look forward to attending.
At this time, we're going to distribute certificates to our students. They're excited. Let's make sure we get certificates to our students. I'm going to kindly ask the board to come off to the side here so that we can congratulate our student athletes. I will also ask Ms. Cahill and Ms. Hagerty to come up to congratulate the students as well, Ms. Almeida.
Mr. Rosen and Ms. O'Shea, of course, and Mr. Colts.
Yes, I think there's one more person who came, but Sophia Rela, it might not be, will be short one. Okay. Giselle Calderon. One of our peer coaches, Lisa Lassen. Another one of our peer coaches, Olivia Lucas. We have another family, a bunch of family combinations. Our three-point specialist on the team, Mr. Nuccio, Michael Nuccio. Another family crew, so we have Ricky Tiberi. And Sophia Rela. I also just want to recognize the manager for the team is Natalie Muscolino. Thank you, everybody.
Just a quick thank you, and I'm going to ask my colleagues from the board to resume So to our Pioneer League team, to the coaches, I also want to acknowledge some of the staff that are here this evening. Thank you all so much for being part of the students' lives, both inside the classroom, outside of the classroom. This Pioneer League team means so much to so many of us. Mrs. Horowitz, thank you for your continued support. Mr. DeGennaro as well, for his continued support. Certainly Ms. Almeida, Mr. Rosen, Ms. O'Shea, for all her efforts with the program and ensuring that our students have such wonderful opportunities. At this time, I'm going to just offer just a five-minute recess. There are students in the room, and I know there's a lot of homework for you to work on and a lot of things to do at home. So before we continue with the rest of the superintendent's report and our honoring of the Operations and Maintenance Department, I just want to take a brief five-minute recess, if that's okay with the board, so that our students may go home and continue their homework activities. But you will just let me take. All right. Good evening, everyone. We'll resume our Board of Education meeting from November 4th with a recognition of such an important group in our school district. And for none, and I say this with full confidence and with full belief, we have the best operations and maintenance staff in the region, period. There is no other ONM staff that can do what our people here do. And I'm so impressed by the work that you do. I'm so inspired by the work that you do. And if it's okay, I'd like to make my way back to the podium so that I may share a So I want to begin by saying first, everyone here already worked a day shift, and it's intense work and it's hard work, and they're here tonight to be recognized and they deserve to be recognized. I also want to acknowledge the head of our facilities department, Dennis VerBoys, Diego Arahu, and the assistant in the office, who, none of this happens without Lisa Scanapico, so I appreciate Lisa being here and all her efforts, day in and day out. When I think of our ONM department, this is my favorite picture that comes to mind. I have shown this picture at this point now, Lisa and I have been all over the state showing this picture of our ONM department, and this is what our ONM department does. They make meaningful learning opportunities for our students possible. So this was an example of an East Team unit in kindergarten where we were dropping eggs from 17 feet up in the air, and we had no way to test the designs because we had no way to get 17 feet up in the air. So who comes to the rescue in one of our instructional lessons? It's our ONM crew. And you went up on that bucket truck, and I think it was Adam in the bucket. Was it Adam? Was that you? It was Adam in the bucket, okay. So Adam's in the bucket, and he's reading out the names, and he's dropping down the designs, and just know that that small little activity for you meant so much to me. And I just want to take a moment to acknowledge each of the people in the department. Ray and Scott, Mike, Mike's always got some heavy machinery that he's operating and really working through for us. Mike is invaluable to our department. Jerry and Jose, I'm a stickler for edged lines, properly edged lines on our campus because the attention to be. And I will tell you that no one can edge a line better than Jose does. I always know when Jose has maintained our facility. Jerry can work at Yankee Stadium with the work that Jerry does on our grounds, absolutely remarkable, and we'll share an example of that with you a little bit later in the presentation. Carmine and Adam, again, just indispensable people in our organization. And did I skip over Dan? I did skip over Dan on the right there. Dan assisted us greatly in so many different capacities, most recently with some renovations at French Hill. And I was sharing this story with one of my colleagues at district office. We were trying to get the pressure of the door just right at French Hill. We couldn't exceed five pounds of pressure to open the door. So as we began, it was nine pounds, and then Dan would go up on a ladder and make, have to dismantle this mechanism, take a turn quarter to the left, reassemble the mechanism. I would pop open the door and we'd be at 5.7. He'd have to get the ladder, disassemble the mechanism, make another quarter of a turn, reassemble the mechanism, and then we're at 5.6. And this went on and on, and Dan was as patient with me as a saint, and I'm so impressed by that. At this point, we enjoy their accomplishments, but our ONM department makes this happen. They make it possible for us to bring different teaching and learning opportunities to our students. Later on in the program, Mr. VerBoys will share the engineering lab. We didn't have an engineering lab. Our in-house crew constructed that for us. We wanted a space for our robotics team. We didn't have a robotics lab. Our in-house team constructed a robotics lab for us. They make learning and so many other wonderful things possible in our district, and I'm just so proud of the work that they do. So at this point in time, I'd like to call up Mr. VerBoys, who will walk you through some of the projects that have happened in this district just in the past few months that were made possible by our ONM crew. Dennis?
Thank you, Dr. Hatter, and thank you Board of Education for this opportunity to present some of our projects that we've been working on in the last couple of months. Let's try this. Okay. First, we have a restoration of our Brookside Ball Field, one that services our students for PE activities and our Yorktown Athletic Community. Our upkeep and continued maintenance and ADA compliance of our French Hill School investment, servicing our many local businesses. Our elementary school playgrounds, which are undergoing new equipment, additions at Mohansik, currently completed last month. Crampon, which is currently underway, and Brookside shortly thereafter. And I share this little story Dr. Hatter shared with me a little while ago. He said that our construction schedule for these playgrounds is always a hot topic at his dinner table, with his children always asking, "Dad, when will they be done with our playgrounds?" We're getting there, we're getting there. Our high school new engineering lab, formerly an amphitheater with a sunken floor and limited accessible seating, and now, an almost fully renovated space with new vinyl plank flooring, easy to maintain and no floor seal or waxing needed. LED lighting will be installed over the upcoming holiday break. Our high school robotics lab was renovated with a new tabletop surface constructed of butcher block and stool-style seating encompassing a vast array of power tools, including a drill press, scroll saw, band and table saws, and a grinder. And lastly, our district-wide goal of providing air conditioning for each and every full-size classroom with an exterior wall to furnish a window or through-wall mounted electric air cooling device to foster a productive learning environment for our students and So before I introduce the individuals being recognized for this outstanding achievement this evening, let me first recognize some behind-the-scenes members, and Dr. Hatter alluded to before, our backbone and glue to our office who keep everything orderly and on schedule. So first off, our administrative assistant, Ms. Lisa Scanapico. And our maintenance foreperson, Mr. Diego Orojo.
So the sampling that Dennis shared with you was just a snapshot of the last three months. There are other things, obviously, that our ONM staff are troubleshooting. Around this time of year, leaves fall off trees, and those leaves need a place to go, and our crew is so dedicated to making sure that the grounds look pristine. As you're all aware, we were the recipients of the National Blue Ribbon Award, most recently, where we had a lot of press come to visit our campus for interviews and for video footage. And the first comment, and Dennis was there for this, the first comment that they all make upon coming onto the campus is, "Wow, this place looks amazing." And these individuals are largely to thank for the day-to-day upkeep of our facility. At this time... At this time, we're going to conclude the reception by just handing out some certificates of appreciation and recognition for the members of our Operations and Maintenance Department. I'm going to ask that our Board of Education and colleagues once again come to the side so that we may honor and congratulate this evening's recipients.
So before I read the names, I have a Vince Lombardi quote. "The achievements of an organization are the results of the combined effort of each individual." This quote sort of sums up the character and the pride of our ONM staffers for the Yorktown brand that they carry every day. So now, with great pleasure, I'll call them up by name, and then we'll stay up here for a photo. So first, Mr. Adam Smith. And last but not least, Mr. Carmine Boninello.
Diego, come on in. Okay, we're going to continue on with the program. However, I know you all have a very early start to your day tomorrow, so if you want to, this way you're here on time tomorrow, you're welcome to depart. Thank you all so much. I am just so proud to call you all colleagues. For our guests in the back, have a great, great evening. We'll continue on. So on Friday evening, our varsity football team defeated... On Friday evening, our varsity football team defeated the number-one seed of John J. Cross River High School, which sets the stage for a Section 1 championship game this Friday evening against Rye High School. The game will be played at Mayapack High School at 7:30 PM. I encourage everyone to come out to the game, support our students, and if you do go to the game, game time temperatures are expected to be at or below the freezing mark, so please dress warmly. It is football. Yorktown High School hosted the annual Putnam Northern Westchester College here on October 24th. We had more than 300 colleges on hand and hundreds and hundreds of students and their families attended. It's absolutely wonderful for our students and their families that we can host this event right in their home school. On November 15th, Mr. DiGennaro, Mrs. O'Shea, and I will travel to Washington, DC to accept the National Blue Ribbon Award. We're so excited to participate in the award ceremony. We anticipate having a celebration for our school community in the coming weeks, and we will certainly send invitations once the date is finalized. The Yorktown High School Fall Comedy, Almost Maine, will be taking place November 15th and 16th at 7:00 PM. That's Friday night and Saturday night. There are no costs for the tickets, admission is free, so I encourage anyone and everyone to come out, support our students. They've been working hard to prepare, and I would love to see you there. A little further down the road, we're hosting a first Lego League competition on January 18th. This is our third consecutive year hosting an FLL competition. We're really excited, obviously, to be doing this. We're still in need of judges for the competition, so if you're interested, you don't have to be a computer programmer or an engineer to be a judge. All are welcomed. If you're interested, please do send me an email. We would love to have you as part of our competition. And we just honored some really, really wonderful, wonderful people, both students and staff. These individuals are just one example of the fine people who keep our district's operations running smoothly. Throughout the course of the next several meetings, actually, we'll continue to honor some of our other departments, people who work behind the scenes to ensure that our faculty and staff are supported in their work with our students. It's a wonderful place to be part of, and it's a wonderful honor to be able to feature some of the people who work behind the scenes to make this place as wonderful as it is. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And it was wonderful to see the Pioneer League and our ONM staff, who do do an amazing job. We have our external auditor presentation. Reshmi, you want to introduce?
Yeah, sure. So, tonight, Ali Betaglia, she's from RS Adams and Abrams, and she'll be going over the financial statements for the year that ended in June. So, Ali, over to you.
Okay, good evening. So I did meet with the audit committee to discuss in full detail the financial statements and the communication letters. Some of the items that we did discuss, some of the financial highlights. I like to say there's basically two sets of financial statements that you have. You have your fund level, which is your modified accrual basis, and then we convert it into accrual basis of accounting, which is your district-wide, where we put on all your long-term assets and your long-term liabilities. We discussed the OPEB liability, that's your Other Post-Employment Benefits Obligation liability, that you implemented last year, where we implemented GASB-75, and we put that full liability onto the district-wide financial statements. And we also discussed the TRS and the ERS system, those plans themselves. The TRS system is fully funded, so you had a net pension asset, and the net pension liability for the ERS system, since that plan itself is not fully funded. We did discuss your fund level, so your operating budget, your general fund. We went through all the reserves, looked at the funding level for those reserves. They were all at good levels. We did, you did actually adopt the new TRS reserve, which just came out in May, so you did adopt it, and you also funded that reserve. That reserve is, though, limited to 2% of the prior-year TRS salaries, so you did put into the maximum amount that can go into that reserve, which is a good thing. At least we have the TRS reserve, which is a bigger expense to the district than the ERS system. You are at the 4% level, the unassigned fund balance, and that's the maximum amount you're allowed to have. Also, we looked at your budget, so the under the budget was 3%, so you definitely have a very tight budget. So overall, it was a very healthy balance sheet. I was very pleased with the financial statements. We issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion in auditis language, so it's the best opinion that you can have. We did not issue any material weaknesses, which is a very good thing. We did have some recommendations to improve the district's internal controls, but like I said, there was nothing that was material in nature. Mostly, it was with the extra classroom activity accounts. And I would be happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you. Lisa, did you have questions?
No questions.
Carol?
No.
Reshmi?
Nope.
Big report.
It's hard to have questions when you said it was all good.
Yes, and I also just wanted to thank Tom and Alicia and the entire business office because it's a grueling process to give us all the information that's needed, and Alicia's great. She sends it up to our client portal, and we're able to even start, you know, our audit before we even hit the district. So I just wanted to thank them.
Thank you. We really appreciate, we appreciate you coming out, and we're happy. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Alicia.
I appreciate it. I hope you all know that Alicia is a former auditor before she came here, so the job that she does is based on a lot of experience. But we appreciate the relationship with Ali and RS Abrams. They've been a tremendous help to us, not just as auditors, but keeping us abreast of breaking developments that are relevant to the school district.
Terrific.
Very appreciative.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to go to personnel. Personnel, we have a resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the creation of 1.0 FTE Maintenance Foreperson Building and Grounds and 5 FTE Custodial Worker/Groundskeeper effective November 5, 2019. These positions are subject to New York State and Westchester County Civil Service guidelines.
Somu?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? We have the rest of our personnel. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. Under certified personnel, we have additions to our substitute list, we have other compensation extra duties, we have coaches and co-curriculars, we have coach appointments for volunteers, co-curricular activities at the middle school, got a lot of this stuff, co-curriculars at the high school, a resignation for the purpose of retirement and additional resignation. Under classified personnel, we have appointments, addition to the substitute list, and an additional resignation.
Somu?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
If I may, just a quick acknowledgement of Donna Eineko and her time here in the district. For anybody who's been in Crampon School and that cafeteria, outside of her regular responsibilities within the district, those bulletin boards are absolutely gorgeous, and she takes such pride in making sure our building looks wonderful for our students and that the learning environment and the cafeteria environment is one that they can enjoy and feel comfortable, and there's a different theme. So in addition to all the fine work she does in our school and with our students, I'll certainly miss that, just personally walking through Crampon and having her say, "Dr. Hatter, you have to see this year's theme," or "this season's theme." I will miss that, and we wish her well, certainly, in retirement.
She was also really groundbreaking in a lot of the community service and the fundraisers and all that stuff. Her face was always there if something was going on at Crampon. She was amazing. We would do wish her well. All right, we're going to go to policy adoption. A motion to approve the second read and adoption of the following policies. We have 5280 interscholastic athletes, 5281 athletic placement process for interscholastic athletic program, and 5285 Yorktown High School academic eligibility policy for athletics and extracurriculars.
Somu? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Business office, a motion to approve the external auditor's report and management response letter for the 2018-19 fiscal year.
Somu?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Silent G, a motion to approve the contract with Silent G Productions for the provision of theatrical lighting services for the fall theatrical production in the Yorktown High School auditorium in the amount of $6,000. The term of service from October 21st through November 19th, 2019, with the scheduled work and rehearsals to be determined with the director.
Somu?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Special Ed, a motion to arrange the following placements as of November 4, 2019.
Somu?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Gifts, grants, and donations. A motion to approve the following gifts, grants, and donations at Yorktown High School. Five guitar stands for the Yorktown High School music program from the Lopez family. The athletic department, $1,400 from the Huskers Club for airline tickets for the spring 2020 varsity baseball trip to Florida. At Mohansick, $1,126 from the Mohansick PTA for a first-grade trip to the Tarrytown Music Hall. And at Brookside, $504.80 from the Westchester Pharma, Robbins Pharmacy for Brookside Playground, and $63 to the Brookside PTA for field trips.
Somu?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? We're up to public comment. Anybody wishing to speak? All right. We're up to board comment. Pete?
Just thought that was a really fun superintendent showcase. Thank you very much. No, it was great. I mean, the Pioneer League, the kids were obviously genuinely excited about it, and I think the ONM staff really had a lot of fun with it, too, which is great. They're very appreciative, as we are, of their work, so it was very nice. Thank you.
Reshmi?
I just want to give a shout-out to Tom and also Alicia. I think, I know that they work tirelessly every day, and yes, during audit season, they keep the audit committee in loop with what's going on, but they really work with the auditors to make sure they have what they need, and they do what needs to happen so that we get these great reports. So, you know, thank you, Tom, for everything. And Alicia, too. I think I spotted her.
Carol?
Yeah, it was a great meeting tonight. I thought both groups that were celebrated tonight were wonderful. The Pioneer League, I was able to attend their last basketball game last year, and there was literally standing room only. It was a wonderful event. It fosters, obviously, teamwork, but enthusiasm, being happy for your teammates, and it was just such an exciting event, and I definitely am committed to making more of their games because I had so much fun. And just a few words about our ONM crew. I know in steering committee meetings, constantly, you know, not everything is outsourced, that we rely on them so much to help us with so many of our projects, and they're always, you know, ready, willing, and able. And you can see the completed projects as we went through the slideshow, so they're just a team that we're really able to rely on, and we really appreciate that.
Lisa?
So I'll just echo everything that's been said, but also to you, Dr. Hatter, for remembering to include these groups in our thanks. You know, I guess often the ONM crew might be forgotten, and just knowing that they were remembered and that we do appreciate them every day, I think, meant a whole lot to them. So thank you for your thoughtfulness in that regard.
It's all been said, so thank you. I also want to thank Reshmi and the audit committee, because they do a lot of work to read through these audit reports and to understand them so that we know whether they're clean when they come to us, and so I appreciate all the hard work that the three of you have done on the audit committee, so thank you very much, too. Ron, Lisa, Tom, anything? Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Somu?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Good night, everyone.
All right. All right.